Okay, would everybody please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
That's screwing you off.
Your brain can't wrap that.
Okay, um, for a roll call, uh, we are all here, including Mr. Mauer, who's on a, uh, phone.
Can he go on mute?
Can he go on mute?
Yeah.
I didn't say that, Jason.
Jake, would you mind going on mute, because there's a lot of feedback back through? Till you have to talk?
No from him.
Thank you, sir.
He can really hold you on mute still.
He'll go on mute and when he wants to talk, he'll come off mute.
Oh, okay.
Or we could listen to Darth Vader talk maybe.
So, uh, the first thing is, our town attorney would like to respond to a, a question that came from Mr. Mauer.
Do you like to hear it out there? Right here, it's good? So, I was asked by... Let me go. Make it official. My mom always told me never to do that. I think she did.
My mother said something.
I'm not ready to give her that.
I'm not gonna tell you what my mother told me not to do.
All right, so I'm here, um, my understanding is that some members of council through the first election had asked me to give an opinion regarding our ability to, uh, include a referendum question on the budget as to whether the budget fee is too high or too low, or something in between, I guess. Yes, sir, Mr.?
I think it was only one town council member that made that request.
Oh, no, it was a few. It was a few council members. You can hear Mr. Mauer?
Not that it matters.
I'm happy to engage in this debate.
Yes, I can hear.
Okay.
Uh, if you want, but anyway, so I have done the research, um, and I'm here to advise you accordingly. Um, as you know, our charter, chapter eight, uh, section six, provides guidance odds to how we proceed with our budget. It is by referendum, and it expressly, uh, in our charter, it expressly states that in addition to the vote on the proposed budget, the referendum may also contain non-binding advisory questions as to whether or not the proposed budget is too high or too low in accordance with the general statutes. So, the question then becomes, is that charter provision legal? The answer is that the statutes do provide for the ability, uh, to do that expressly using very similar language. So, the answer is yes, you can do it, um, without question. So, there's no question that it can be done. The, the, the follow-up question is how should it be done, or how can it be done?
Thank you.
Sorry, we have Girl Scouts that have donated some cookies to share.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hugs, trumps, they go.
I'll take that pie. All right, you guys can share a rest.
So, there's two statutes that kind of govern, uh, most specifically, it's, uh, nine dash three sixty-nine, which is the procedure for holding a referendum. That's Connecticut General Statute nine dash three six nine. Um, there are a number of cases that, uh, unfortunately were brought through the Superior Court, uh, by litigants, mostly taxpayers, challenging the budget referendum process resulting from the inclusion of these types of questions on the ballots. Um, the, I'd say that the seminal case is Adam Orange, uh, and it, it's a very good discussion about the, um, propriety of doing this, and, uh, I will say to the council that that case, that there was a challenge as to, uh, the referendum questions. I, I think the case is interesting in that, um, what they did in Orange was they, um, you, you also have to determine whether or not the vote is by tabulator or hand ballot, and that's a, that makes a difference as well there. They used a voting tabulator. They had three levers to pull there, or however they do it. Uh, it was yes, and then there was two noes. Yes, or no too high, no too low, and that was challenged as being, uh, ambiguous, I would say, and confusing to the voter. Ironically, the budget went down, uh, there with that, um, presentation. Uh, there was only a few no-too-low votes, and the majority of the noes, the noes were too high. Um, the no-too-high was less than the yes, but with the inclusion of the, I think it was fifty votes, no-too-low, it went over the threshold, and so the budget failed. Ironically, ironically, um, or not coincidentally, when the budget went out for the second time, there were no such questions at all. And then what happened, then it passed the second time. So, I, I think it was interesting, uh, in that, uh, and there was no discussion at all, and I don't have the history from Orange, there was no discussion at all as to why that was the rationale the same time around. I, I can only presume that, uh, because of the hysteria that probably existed over the confusion, uh, relative to those questions, that they decided to just eliminate that from the next referendum budget. I mean, it would make no sense that everybody was, thought it was such a great idea the first time around, and the second time around, they're like, let's just forget about that one, I can do it again. Uh, again, that's, that's my reading into it. Um, but, uh, to answer the question, is it permitted? Yes. Uh, my opinion as a taxpayer, and certainly as the attorney for the town, when I know that, uh, even the legal budget was, uh, being questioned, uh, this year, is that if you are concerned about having, uh, further litigation over something such as simple as this, especially owing to the fact that, to my knowledge, we have not had such a question on any recent budget, I would highly suggest that we not include such questions on the budget, uh, especially in the way that Orange did it. There, there is an option that you can have separate questions for an advisory nature only, but I would venture to say that it may be just as confusing to the voters by having such questions on there. Uh, it could be considered suggestive. Uh, there's a million things that I think my brother counsel could come up with to potentially challenge a vote in one, one way or the other, and I think both sides would have equal opportunity to say it was suggestive one way or the other. So, uh, in summary, the answer is yes, you can do it. Uh, part two would be, there are two ways to do it. You can have the crazy way that Orange did it, in my opinion, which is to have three different votes, the two noes and a yes, or something else. Um, you can also have a yes, do it, and we're gonna have advisory questions. Uh, but my opinion is I would avoid it, because I don't think we need any more confusion as to whether or not the vote, uh, was one way or the other. Uh, I will say that, uh, as a council member, I remember we could, did consider this, uh, that one year that we had multiple referendums. Um, I think it was for five, or three or four, we were at Massey, and our, and our joint kind of bringing everybody together, and let's figure this out. And I do remember discussing it at that point, because there was some confusion. Okay, now, you know, it's, these cuts are, these, these adjustments feel like they're so, uh, stern, what are the taxpayers thinking? Like, we really don't know what the taxpayers are thinking. As, as, as we know from sitting as public officials, we always have a broad audience. Um, sometimes it's hard to, uh, discern what, uh, our taxpayers actually want, but that's all I got. So, if that wasn't a lawyer's opinion, I don't know what I guess. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
The, to your knowledge, has there been any challenge on the advisory question? Because I think that's really more the way I was...
There have been a number of cases. I, I can tell you there were probably, uh, don't quote me, but I would say there are at least fifteen cases out there. Uh, I didn't see any cases go rise to level of, of the appellate court. Uh, really, they were all Superior Court decisions. All of them were challenges as to the suggestiveness, or the ambiguity, or the vagary of the ballot as a whole. Um, I think, you know, I think that kind of answers, answers the question a little bit. If you're gonna have a shall question is, you know, shall we approve the budget at X number? And then the next question would be, you know, is it too high, or is it too low? I, I just don't know how confusing that would be to the voter. I, I really don't know. Putting myself in the shoes of a voter and having to vote that way, it, it seems pretty straightforward, but I don't know, you know, is it, is it, i- i- is it subject to litigation? Certainly it is. You know, is it less subject to litigation by having a nice clean question that we've had for the last ten, fifteen years? Certainly. So, I don't really have a answer to that, but I, you know, again, I, I, I don't know that it's a good idea legally. Um, if, if you're asking me, you know, is, is one more certain to not result in litigation than the other, I can, I can easily answer that question.
So, so your legal concern would be that it would open, be open to litigation?
It certainly opens the door, without question. You know, again, is it, is it allowed? Yes, hundred percent.
And other towns do do it?
There, I, there, I only researched the, uh, case law, and, and, and in that regard, I've only seen the contested ones, so I, my assumption is other towns do do it. Um, the other thing I will mention is, if you decided to do it, the Secretary of State has been charged with providing guidance to municipalities as to the appropriateness of the question. So, if you did decide to craft language and you wanted their approval, uh, I would certainly look at it, and I would look to the guidance of the Secretary of State, which, uh, is generally upheld.
Okay. So, thank you for that. So, Mr. Mauer, do you have anything to say? Because this, this was your question. He's on mute. You can't hear him. No.
I can, I can hear. I just have to turn it off, and I said you guys can hear.
I'm not saying that at hand, Mr. Mauer, that's for sure. I couldn't repeat this.
Uh, no, it, that, that did answer my question. Um, I, I, I don't plan on taking any action with regards to that at the end tonight, um, and I think, uh, I, I, certainly, certainly some things to think about based off of those answers. So, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Mr. O'Rourke?
A question I have is, uh, with regards to the contested cases that you were discussing, uh, on those, uh, on those budgets that were, that these, uh, proposed questions added to it, were they both town and, uh, the Board of Education combined, or were they separated? Or what was the structure of the referendum in question? You know, was it, was it a combined two-part vote covering both the town and the Board of Ed, or were they separated now?
I would say both. Both. And, and again, don't, um, not every contested case that I found was absolutely budget-related, because the statute, the statute that governs questions, there are constitutional questions, there's ordinance questions, there's all kinds of questions, so not every case that's litigated was just straight budget-related. Uh, other towns have different formats for budgets as well. There's a town meeting structure, and the first board of selectmen can refer to a referendum. So, there's different qualifications for how things can be done based upon the, the town's structure and the structure of the budget. So, I don't wanna, I'm trying to answer this broadly, but, uh, you know, I, I think that, I think to answer your question so simply is, is the, the same problems arise when questions are presented.
Okay, anything else?
Just briefly, would it be appropriate to say if the question, as an advisory question, was worded properly, there would be less of a concern?
I can tell you my suggestion would be, if you were to pick between the two formats, certainly the advisory question would be a better choice if you had to choose one or the other. I would not recommend the ambiguous voting nature of having the yes double no. I would say advisory only, and there's, there's language that the statute references that we would put on the ballot that, that is a disclaimer, call it, as opposed to that this is advisory only, and there's a, there's a certain sentence that you put on there. Again, does that, does that encourage people to, does that encourage people to even give it consideration? I, I don't know. But that, that disclaimer language is, is constantly on every single, in fact, I, I highlighted it somewhere, but basically it's...
When, when I was looking through the statutes, uh, nine, three, seven, zero indicated that you needed to have the question decided sixty days in advance of your budget?
There's all kinds of, there's all kinds of statutory limitations. I think, I think there's a forty-five day requirement, uh, that the question be presented, and then there's, again, the clerk has the authority to draft the language. I didn't see any authority of the legislative body to be drafting the language, but you can give directions. So, there's a lot of loopholes if you decide to go down that road. There's definitely time constraints and loopholes. I, I think it's forty-five days, if you want me to look into that. You know, if you guys decide, I can certainly look. I didn't, I didn't go into details as to the absolute process, it was just kind of a threshold, yes or no for me right now, but there, you're right, there is a process and a, and a threshold.
Thank you, Mr. Leo. Anything else? So, we're going on with our meeting. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, first, we have public participation.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Rourke?
No, you don't.
Steve Kerr, thirty-five, Ampogatling. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance, but I am not speaking for the Board or any of its members tonight. Um, let me first address the question of the, the advisory question. Two separate questions, I would have no problem with. We've had other votes and referendums where we've actually had two questions on the ballot, and I think to, to building the Jockey Hollow, where we asked about the building, and we asked about, um, the auditorium, and those were two separate votes, two separate questions on the same ballot, and we didn't seem to have any problem with people answering them. So, again, I don't, I agree with the town attorney in that I don't, do not like what Orange did, um, but two separate questions, I have no issue with. Also, I would point out that Easton did do this a number, a number of years ago. I couldn't tell you exactly how many, so if somebody wants to follow up with somebody in Easton, you might be able to find out exactly what they did.
Is Easton still doing it?
I don't know whether they've done it. I just remember that they did it once. I don't know whether they did it in each of the multiple referendums. Um, but again, I think if you put the main question, and then you put this advisory question, people can answer it, and I answer it. Um, I don't think it's gonna confuse people. I don't think it's gonna get them to not vote on the main question, so, um, that's just, you know, my fault. I wouldn't have an issue with it. Um, two other issues that I wanted to address. Um, one is, I know it's late in terms of when you need to have your budget submitted, but given the virus and, and all the issues around it, I wonder whether we need to consider, and I guess to the first election, whether anybody has talked about needing to add anything to the budget if we were to do, you know, more advanced cleaning, um, whether we would need more supplies if, you know, we wanted to start wiping down, um, you know, armrests and tabletops and stuff, whether we needed more supplies, whether we needed additional, uh, labor hours in terms of a custodian, or whether there would be any impact to the Health Department. Um, who knows? Maybe it's all gone by, by July one, but on the other hand, maybe there's something you all need to think about adding some additional dollars to the budget for. Um, last area that I wanted to comment on is funding for roads. Um, there was some mention, I would consider, um, adding additional bonding to do more roads in the short term for some of the reasons that we discussed at your other workshop. Uh, we have a backlog, you have very cheap bonding rates now. If anything, it's likely to go down between now and when we would issue the next set of bonds, and so I think you ought to consider adding additional, um, money in bonding, even though I'm one who generally doesn't like to do bonding. I think now's a good time to do it.
Thank you. So, going on to the, um, municipal budget fiscal year twenty dash twenty-one, uh, I, I'd just like to make a statement first, as Chair, I think I have, I have the right to. In view of what's going on in this world, I mean, with the virus, with, with the economy, and, you know, President Trump's things, we probably have the best economy in the whole world, but it's certainly very quickly going down because of everything else that's happening. I would consider a motion where we just leave the budget the way it gets presented tonight, and that's it. That's my opinion. So, I'd like to have a motion to start this meeting. Mr. O'Rourke?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the following resolution, final budget approval resolution and move for its adoption, Resolution twenty dash thirty-nine, resolve that pursuant to Chapter Eight, subsection four of the Monroe Town Charter. The town council approves a total municipal expenditure budget of thirty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is hereby forwarded, forwarded to the Board of Finance.
Do we hear a second to that motion? Second by, I just have, I have any, okay, so it's easily, because it's very hard to see with nine people like this. Okay, so we have a second, uh, discussion.
Could I make a comment? I think it was three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
What did I say?
Three forty-seven.
I'll give the extra two dollars.
Three forty-nine. I'll read it again. Thirty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Farnes. Okay, so we have discussion on this motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, while I, uh, agree with the sentiment of the quality of the town side of this budget, there are mainly two areas that I do think we could slightly improve on, and I, as has been the practice of this council, I would ask for the, uh, for that, for the motion, as, were, as currently presented, to either be withdrawn or, uh, voted down. And there are simply two motions that I think could improve the budget, and it's always been the practice of our council to allow for any council members to make such motions.
I understand. Um, Mr. O'Rourke, you want to withdraw the motion?
Any other?
Well, other discussions first, or you can draw, depending. I see nobody here as in discussion.
There, there are some issues that...
Yeah, so, once he withdraws it, then you and Mr. Mauer and anybody else here can make all the motions or whatever they want. Okay, so, Mr. O'Rourke?
I make a motion to withdraw the, uh, resolution.
Just withdraw the motion? Okay, we can just withdraw the motion. Okay, so, uh, who's first? Ladies first?
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen first? Okay. Mr. Mauer?
Thank you very much. Uh, as I said, I, I have two fairly simple motions. So, my first motion is I move to increase, uh, line item one, zero, zero, one, one, zero, one, five, one, zero, one, zero, zero, two, zero, one, five, zero, two, zero, five, which is the Board of Finance contingency, sixty thousand dollars from one million, twenty thousand to one million, eighty thousand.
Okay, do I hear a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Martin. Discussion?
Uh, so, the purpose of my motion for this contingency is I'd like to add a sixty thousand dollars into our contingency fund, so that throughout the year, we can be, we can discuss the addition of an E D, permanent E D C position and grant writing position. Uh, I recognize that this is not something we have planned for, which is why I'd like to put it into our contingency fund, uh, so that if we are able to come to an agreement as a council and create such a position, that we have these funds already set aside.
Okay. Any other discussion on this particular motion? Miss Martin?
I would just add that I think that's a reasonable request, because the, when, when we have discussed in the, an E D C person in the past, we, uh, it's always been charged that we didn't have a job description or, you know, any plan like that. This gives us the ti, and it's just in the contingency, so it gives us the time to look through all the requirements and have a non...
Binding.
Yeah, not, well, yes, a non-binding discussion, but a unheeded discussion about what the council thinks about this position. So, I think this is reasonable and timely, and I would support this motion.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Aguilar?
I would support this motion as well, as, um, talking to a lot of, um, people in town, there is a big need, there is, there is a big feel for a big need for more economic development. Um, I feel like, I feel that as our grand list is improving, our mill rate is improving more, because we have not, as, as, as we move ahead, we're also moving behind. We have a couple businesses coming to town, but we've lost a lot of businesses. Just on Route one eleven, we have, uh, eleven vacancies in Nine and a Half Mile. Um, I feel that if we had somebody working on this full-time, looking for grants, looking to sell our town, I give our volunteers all the credit in the world. Mr. Kellogg, I think, has done a tremendous job. I just think it's a job that somebody, if we had somebody doing it, we could sell our town a lot better.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Reed?
Um, what was the, uh, what was the motion?
Sixty thousand dollars.
So, it's a sixty thousand dollar increase?
Contingency.
Yes, contingency.
Well, so, so there's, there's, there's two discussions here. One is the viability and the validity and applicability of a economic development director coming in for sixty thousand dollars, so that's, that's one thing that's being tabled through a contingency to have unheeded discussion throughout the year. Parking, that one, from a fiscal management perspective, that's not what contingency is for. Contingency's for, we lost four trucks in a hurricane, affected by trucks. That's, that's what contingencies are for. They're not, they're not used to budget, projected, actual plans, they're, they're contingencies. So, moving aside, an economic director, which I think is a separate conversation, I wouldn't be for this just for the way it's proposed, the, the fiscal construct, the media, you know, the, the mode that it's being proposed in. It's not what contingency is for. So, this is my opinion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
I just wanted to, uh, ask, not to put him on the spot, our finance director, the contingency line item is restricted by charter to a certain threshold, so is that, I just want to know from...
It's a calculation that's usually done at the very end.
Right. So, there may, so I just don't know how close we are to that at this point without doing the math. I just don't know if, um, you know, ultimately, Board of Finance would have to ensure it's underneath that at the, at the very end, correct?
Okay, any other discussion? So, let's have a vote on this motion. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Three people against this motion? Six people. So, uh, going on to, any other motions? Mr. Mauer?
Uh, yeah, one more motion, uh, this is on page two eleven, the last tab. Uh, in our capital budget plan, I move to increase the town paving program from one million to two million.
And you did say paving, right?
Paving, yes.
Okay. Uh, second by anybody?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Aguilar? Discussion?
Uh, so, I think the, I, I briefly discussed what my thought process behind this at our last meeting, but I'll go into a little bit more detail. Right now, bonding costs are low, paving costs continue to go up. Um, to me, it makes more sense to bond a larger portion over the next year or two years, and then cut back our bonding in the subsequent years. So, for example, bond two million this year, two million next year, and then for the subsequent four years, bond five hundred thousand, uh, when it comes to town paving, so that we can up, so that we can do more upfront at a lower bonding rate and at lower cost, and therefore get more done with our money at the same long-term spending, uh, cost, um, and probably actually a little bit less because of the, uh, fact that the bonding rate, one would, uh, considering the current rates, would be lower than they, uh, presumably would be in the future. Uh, it's a way of, uh, spreading out the payment, so it doesn't really affect the budget, uh, to a large degree with the bonding, as well as taking advantage of the current low rates.
So, uh, let me be part of this discussion. My comment is, we don't know what's gonna happen in this world. You're gonna have people who won't be able to pay the taxes, the mill rate goes up, they're not gonna be able to pay that. I, I, I know there are not many, well, there are probably a lot of hourly workers in Monroe who are not gonna be able to afford anything, even though the government's talking about giving them all kinds of relief, like, uh, Guevar talked today about a thousand dollars, a check to every, everybody who's working. So, so I'm just saying, I would not be in favor of increasing it at all. Other times, I would be. I just don't see doing that this year. Any other discussion?
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, if I may just respond, this is on the capital side of the budget, and therefore would not be increasing our mill rate and would not be increasing the tax burden, except for in future years.
But even who, we don't know how long this is gonna take, and that's just my comment. Any other discussion? Mr. Scott?
Yes, um, as, as the chairman of the S P C, um, this is something that's directly on our agenda coming up over the next couple weeks. I think we have a meeting on Wednesday to sit down with the first election to discuss what, um, what items are gonna be on the capital project list. Um, I think this is a great conversation for that, and that's ultimately with the, uh, the Board of Finance when we come back and have that capital discussion. I don't think that needs to be decided now. By adding it in now, you're limiting yourself of what other projects that might be more valuable to the town than this one. So, I think it's, uh, it's a little short-sighted right now. It's definitely worth the conversation when we get to, uh, next week.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? So, all in favor of this?
Uh, wait, before we go on, um, I was just waiting to allow other people to vote.
Well, you've spoken once on, on the same motion, so anybody else want to speak?
Twice I've spoken.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Formacella?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I just want to note my agreement with Councilmember Scott on this issue. Uh, with the retuning of S P C, I, I think it's a great opportunity for the council through that, uh, subcommittee to discern and consider all the options available to make, uh, capital expenditures for our community. I think it's a great opportunity to go through that subcommittee, uh, as Mr. Scott said, and as presented by the first election during our town council meeting. Uh, so, I would be against this motion, uh, because of the S P C meeting and being able to cipher through all the different capital requests from the departments.
Okay, thank you. So, that's it for discussion. So that's it for discussion. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Three people against this motion? Six people. Any other motions?
None but me.
Mr. Kellogg?
I could just bring up a matter, I just want to make the council aware of a couple things. So I've said that we would keep the council abreast of new information as it came forward. We do have some updated estimates for a couple of areas. I just want to make the council aware of this, but I think what my recommendation would be, would be to allow a little bit more time to go by and let the Board of Finance make a final determination on these things. These are areas that the Board of Finance normally looks at in their final course. One is in the HR and medical insurance line. We do not have final numbers from the state, but the estimate that we are now receiving is lower than what we budgeted, so there is likely going to be some savings, or, I shouldn't say savings, it will be a reduction in the increase. So, there will be likely some reduction, and we'll see there. The, there is also in the police pension line, the state's, the increase to our contribution on the police salaries, it also looks like it might be a little bit less than what they originally told us. So once again, there could be a small reduction that could be allowed in that time. If you'd like to get into more specifics and details, I'm happy to. I just wanted to make you all aware of that, but I would certainly let the Board of Finance aware when they evaluate these lines again like they normally do, so that we could lock in that in the final numbers.
Okay. So going back...
I have a quick question. At what point did you and your staff make the determination of what these, what you thought the numbers would be?
February eighth.
February eighth.
When I presented the budget.
Anything else?
And that was, yeah, for, for both of them, it was based upon guidance from the state, or in the case of the insurance, state plus what our insurance broker slash consultant was advising us. So it's always been consistent in terms of following that guidance. But again, the, the new information on police pension, I suppose, was received about a week or maybe a week and a half ago?
I'm going to say maybe two weeks ago.
Maybe two weeks ago. And the new information on medical insurance was, again, that's, that's more guidance, it's not a final number. That was probably around the same time, yeah. It was all of them last, yeah.
Okay, so I believe we have a motion on the floor.
No.
Oh, because he would do it, okay. So am I correct that the numbers are the same? I'd let Mr. O'Rourke do the motion again. The numbers haven't changed.
The item change.
Right. So, Mr. O'Rourke, do you mind just reading your motion again, just so we all have it?
I want to make a motion to accept the following resolution, final budget approval resolution and move for its adoption. Resolution twenty dash thirty-nine, resolve that pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section Four of the Monroe Town Charter. The Town Council approves the total municipal expenditure budget of thirty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is hereby forwarded to the Board of Finance.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella. I think we've had enough discussion, but anyone have one last thing?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Well, wait, wait, Mrs. Martin first, and I believe Mrs. Aguilar, you can make the last comment, so.
Madam Chair, I would just like to notify the Chair of our right to submit a minority report when we finish our voting.
Sure. Ms. Aguilar?
I would just like to just say one thing. I actually came into this budget thinking I was going to vote no, because I don't think it's very far sighted. I don't think we're looking ahead to the future as far as economic development goes. I, I give everybody a lot of credit for coming in at the number that we came in, the first electman, the Board, the Finance, but I, I truly believe that we would benefit as a town to have a little more presence in the economic development area. I won't be voting no for this budget, as I feel that the times that we're in, as Madam Chair said, have changed my position a little bit, and I do feel, but I would like us to discuss maybe in the next year, a little more economic development, how to build that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Martin, we're going to vote first, and then you can do your report?
No, it could be a written report, but I...
Okay, okay, fine. So, all in favor of this motion?
I...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mauer?
That's why you got to leave the mic.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to say first and foremost that I do think on the town side of this budget that we have a very fair budget. I will echo some of Ms. Aguilar's remarks about, I do feel that it doesn't necessarily show a far sighted budget. There are certain items, as I made clear in my motion, that I think could make this a stronger budget. That being said, I do think this is a good budget, and therefore will be voting for it. There is a caveat there, that one of the items that we haven't discussed, as it is my purview that we shouldn't be discussing, is the Board of Education side of this budget. There has obviously been a lot of talk about that throughout the town, and I didn't feel, and I still do not feel like it was in the Town Council's purview to discuss it. But in passing this budget to the Board of Finance, it is within the Board of Finance's purview, and I would like to, as part of my yes vote, put on record stating that I would expect the Board of Finance to take a serious look at the restoration of certain funds to the Board of Educate, original Board of Education budget.
Okay, thank you. So now we're voting? All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay, it passes on nine to zero. Any public participation?
We don't have to be seconded.
Oh, okay. So what about the German? Need to vote for a German?
Yep.
All right. It's six for a motion, six for it.
Ms. Aguilar made a motion to adjourn? I think I heard her. I'll second it.
There you go. It passes.